There we go. I'm gonna call the January, February twenty seventh meeting of the planning committee commission to its quarters. This time I'll ask if anyone in the public attending has anything you wanna say.
Oh, first planning commission meeting, but at least three, remember, fourth.
Alright.
We're just excited, yeah. Hey, have some interest and help me light that one up here.
Your name?
Aaron Ashton.
Oh, Aaron Ashton, fun coming along.
It's been awhile.
Been had been quite awhile, yeah.
Went right across the street from Tunde, but I'm still, I'm still around.
Yeah, I know, I know, we met at the firm. Yeah, I'm sure you're back and you said you're my friend, son.
You're not the guy who's sweetest friend.
I am.
I'll soon find my place, okay.
Just figure out.
There we go, we're good, I remember.
Alright, uh. That said, are you, um. Joining us?
I'm attending the meeting.
You're just attending, okay.
I don't have any business on board the board, then I'm aware.
Right, okay.
Unless you guys want me to weigh in on something.
Yeah, that is. Um, alright, so first order of business is we have, um, minutes, uh. From the twelfth and the twenty-third, so I would entertain. Um, are you willing to take notes?
I'm already on it.
I'll make a motion to accept both notes or both meetings.
I think we should do them individually, just, you know, um. Knowing his comments, I think we should just, uh, first make a motion on the twelfth, which will say.
Make a motion.
A second. We gotta get my Michael all in favor.
Hi.
And then, uh.
Make a motion for the other minute.
He's good, alright, we'll second. All in favor, alright, alright, the minister. The miniature, please. Um. Alright, I asked it up for the comments first, so that's already done, um.
Got it, great.
Alright, so yeah, I think, uh, Nick is gonna make a little presentation about this document that I hope you've already heard.
So, just a question before you start, this is the program started somewhere else and we're looking at it for, and the sample?
Yeah, this is, this, they discussed that a CPRC luncheon not too long ago, and North Bennington brought up this was the current actors they were working. Uh, but it's, it's reflective of a nation-wide trend to legalize this type of zoning in this particular way. So, I pulled it from North Bennington, it's a broadly interesting idea, and it's something that we, we should have gotten to when we were writing the bylaw for that time for thirty-three.
This is basically a compliment to the public rules.
Yes, it's, it's a, and I'll get into that, uh, it's what happened in our own population. Um, so, long short of this is, I started to leave this, the, um, rules from North Bennington and, but this is kind of a verbal summary, um, these cottage court developments are a very traditional way to develop houses that are both together facing courtyard with parking and loading around the outsides. Um, they accommodate a whole lot of different buildings that can be, be single family, really great for duplexes, as well as small scale family. People use, use the rooms, but the result may vary on those. Um, the, but yes, use the plan unit development rule to implement them because they require realization of a bunch of different individual items that require variance. Um, so here's an example pulled from North Bennington, this is the second, they believe, one in it.
This, cuz the parking.
Yeah, the bigger one is, yeah, the bigger one is a little bit less relevant to something like what we're looking at. Yeah, four homes in this case include, well, six homes, two single family, they have the left, two duplexes on the right. All around a, a shared courtyard with joint visitor parking above the top, parking regional units for on the edges and presumably shared utilities moving between, um, undergrounding.
So, seven's a, is a common area?
This is a, this, in this case, it'd be like a motor lawn, where everyone has a, has a share.
Lawn, yeah, common area, yeah, okay.
Yeah. But, as you can see, they don't delineate which, what the lot boundaries are in here. But, this, if, these, these kind of developments typically do require some more flexibility than our existing mass rules allow. Um, I have a couple more examples from the real world that are a little bit less stylized. Here's one where you have a bunch of different sized homes clustered around a common green and a fiber pit. Um, with one big joint parking area along the edge of the overall area, so. And then here's another one with, which has parking and driveway on just one side, and everyone, everything clustered around a, around a shared green that's not immediately used to it. So it's, it keeps your common areas out of the areas where, where kids are gonna run into the street, makes it for, makes it much more friendly um, common area environment and makes better use of the open space and the properties rather than having, um, having unnecessary side yard that everything's like that.
It's basically making a little cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's, it's almost the reverse where you are putting, where you're getting the open space to get in that central area and then the rest of the utilities are on the outside where you can, um, where you can effectively combine the open space, make sure, all the open spaces that are there is used really effectively. As opposed to having these very blocky setbacks that can make for awkwardly sized unusable side yards. Unnecessary front yard or backyard for home, for seniors, for those caregiver obligations. And really, I think a lot about like the nurses and, and the people who work overnight hours, that a big lot with a lot of outdoor maintenance just doesn't work for their schedule because they can't be there, there outside mowing the grass in the morning when they're available.
Um. So, so no vehicles are allowed within the interior, you park your car on the edge?
Yeah, park your car on the edge.
Is it and you walk in?
Yeah, or have, yeah, and some, sometimes it's, it's done with garages and the house developed on top of the garage. I've seen that, I, I think that can be a really effective way to do this. Um, but, the key in any zoning law here is, is allowing maximum flexibility for them to design what works for these odd sites, some empty seats sites. Uh, that might be two or three acres, but they're a weird shape. Um.
Kind of the one example that was a little weird.
Yeah, you have like a weird triangular or lot here, um, or it's probably cut off somewhere up here, but. Yeah, you have, when you have these, these very awkwardly shaped lots or shop, or lots that above the roads um, in a less than ideal way, frontage requirements are one of the biggest problems as part of all of this. So as part of any review, frontage requirements are probably the most important thing they get swayed here. Um, so we have a, a really generous frontage requirement of a hundred feet more rolls in, for instance, and that would completely preclude, preclude that. So, how do you guys do this? Um, in your bylaws, page sixty-five point five, page sixty-five, sixty-six, is where the plan unit development rule is. Um, it's only a two-part section, that two-part section is we, that's a, it's said very broadly, we can effectively at our discretion, or at, and then an applicant's discretion, apply plan unit development rules already. There's nothing that says you can't do all of this in your existing bylaws without changing them if you really wanted. But it is just very unclear that you could do this, um, because that section five point three to five point five, um, or, one point three, so five point five dot one, the first section of that, and three to five are where you outline the authorities. Um, five dot two, um, the section dot two defines when you can make someone do this against their will, um. Dot three to five are where, are saying broadly, we already have these authorities, we can, we can at our discretion waive certain massing rules because it may make sense for a lot if they apply to use the PUD. Which requires a bit more, um, more planning, uh, planning discretion on this. Where you have to review it a little bit more thoroughly because you're waiting. Um, so those rules that you could waive are outlined in, in section three to five, but, but importantly, my read on that existing bylaws is that, that is independent of the density bonus outlined in this, in section two. Um, that, that five dot five dot two, the sec, the only other section of the PUD rule is you get a density bonus for for side open space. But, you're not precluded from giving people density bonuses, or not only side aside open space. That's just one where if they guarantee that twenty percent of their lot's gonna be open space, they get a density. That's a very blunt and oftentimes really it's one instrument and it's almost too little because it doesn't inherently tell them that you're going to relax any other specific rules. Um, it's important for something like this, if someone's gonna put the engineering in to get you, like that, they need some more certainty on that you're not just gonna, gonna say, well, we're not gonna use our discretionary rules, so this is dead. Um, and it's a lot easier to have it outlined exactly like North Bennington does. Under these circumstances, you do qualify, and here's what you can have a certainty of. Uh, here's our guidance in advance, uh, if you're designing like this, this is what we're looking for, which is one of these. Um, so flexible, new, importantly, it should be neutral with regard to whether it's one parcel or subdivided, um, with some of these lots, it makes a lot more sense to use the homes on one lot and either rent them or, or maybe condo situation. We, we've had to make some of the, the decisions in the past for novel. Um, but flexibility in land tanker is really important. Um, and al- but ultimately, the pieces that you're looking to suspend for most of this is interior rear inside setbacks, you probably could keep, or it is very common to keep setbacks around the edges of the lot. Um, but, for, we, for among the homes, you don't need side setbacks, you should give them the floor, it's likely to let them just look at it, they think that it governs.
Yeah, there's a, there is a side setback in this, about fifteen.
Yeah, like some of them do, and you'll see like some of that, this is, this is part of a tradition that in our plan that goes back thirty or forty years of development and has become very bogus. Um, every couple of years, someone feels like they rediscover it. But this is something where we know we're not reinventing the wheel, someone locally has a really good bylaw. Um, we have a really good mechanism for which to implement it, and it's a pretty limited list to, um, to get it implemented in our bylaw, we know where it could go, we know what needs to be changed, it's really like two or three paragraphs away. Um, so.
Can you, can you go back to that plan we were just looking at?
Yeah.
Just one, now, the plan on the right, those are tradi- traditional lots, is that correct, surrounding the cottage?
Yeah, there's one cottage quarter and the rest.
The rest are all traditional, uh, layouts, okay.
Yeah, so these are actually very, very small cottage, cottages over on the right, we're talking a couple hundred square feet. Um, almost accessory u- unit size, really, really good for those eight.
Okay, there's something like this up in Castleton, I remember.
Yeah.
And, and is there a perimeter road, a perimeter road for the, for the development?
On this one, that one does not have a perimeter road. Um, these both rely on, this one has an existing, uh, either alley of it, or support as a piece of a lot.
Yeah, the road.
But they're, the important thing is they're flexible.
This, this area here though, this is a perimeter road, right?
No, that.
Oh, that's not?
Okay.
Um, but yeah, they have, they have sidewalk and they're actually, that looks like a pretty big setback to the road. Um, thirty, thirty-ish feet if you're sitting in a normal with sidewalk, um, so.
I mean, if the developer wants to come and build this, I think, I don't see anything wrong.
How dependent is it on infrastructure that exists, like wastewater?
Well, importantly, because, because we're a town that don't have a lot of wastewater, we do have water. Um, this is great for making, if, for making sure that what resources are there are used effectively. If someone can, so ultimately, you may see that that central green is a great wastewater field, and that's often what would be done here. That, like, we all have a joint septic, um, and one of the big benefits of all this is shared infrastructure. So joint septic, joint well, um, joint heating was something that John brought up recently, that, that's, that's something that like that is used, we are looking at the center site for instance, has doing wood fired boiler, um, so. So that, and that's the closest thing that we have that kind of resembles, it's around an interior street, but with some open space in the center. Well, kind of, it's not all oriented toward that, but it has something, a lot of similarities to this.
This is the Shire's closing project that you're talking about.
Yeah, the Shire's housing site right here, like just a block away.
I wanted to point out, we were talking about this.
Yeah, so that's.
Anyone who thought of it, this is Shire's.
Yeah. Maybe I'm, I'm hallucinating here, but I, I see a problem with emergency services access, like fire trucks or emergency ambulances. Especially in the lower, the what, the layout to the right there, yeah.
So these are two public streets, so this is actually a.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a point, but if there are cars parked here, these, these houses here are kind of isolated.
I mean, maybe, um, it's also the kind of thing that, that you could also limit to like the water service area where that's covered with hydrants. Um, that would be entirely reasonable, that says, if it's within the water service area, this, this is available.
Yeah, and they could drive up into the green area if they have.
If you look at like the North Bennington concept, that's one, that's another way of, of saying, hey, this one definitely really off in by our service access. It's what we say, they're a way they're designing fire trucks, um.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is fine because you've got a, a circulation road.
Yeah, and that's some, the kind of thing where it may be that under certain circumstances, with certain design, you could put in something that says we have determined that, that, that this design is adequate for fire service. Or, you can even kick it to the fire chief and say, hey, this, if you're gonna, if you're going to use this, you require like a letter of endorsement from the fire chief saying that they can ably serve fire service to that property.
Right.
Because ultimately, one of the biggest things that's a determinant of fire service is the, the overall density of the, the structure and the uh, development and density is good for fire service. So, like, you wanna have as much, or ambulance packed in as you can in the areas that are teams we serve by fire and we are accountable as well to our by fire service, the, the two fire stations and, uh, the fire vehicles that we are committed to. So ultimately, we are very, very confident as the central town, we're in top service area with air service. That we can absolutely serve developments of many types, they already serve developments of many types, um, on extremely good trains. Um, so.
Yeah, I thought there was something about fire, fire hydrants in here, but it's actually, uh, fully, fully sprinkled is, is mentioned in one area, that I suppose one could put something about, you know.
Yeah.
Casement of fire hydrants system.
Yeah, that's part of it, yes.
Yeah.
That is possible.
Yeah, in areas that are, that, that have a, a higher hydrant within X number of feet, um, something like that, it could also be. But yeah, we don't really have the ability to guarantee sprinkler code, um, and typically, because we're not building over three stories, it's not something we need to be worried about.
Sprinkler systems are, are quite expensive.
Extremely expensive, and you're constrained by the international building.
So, Matt.
That's the separate ones adopted, so.
You're pricing people out when you're really trying to put people in.
Yeah, yeah, we, and we don't do bill work here, this, that's a, that's a bill code thing. North Bennington has the ability to do some bill code work, they have bill code inspectors locally, um, that's not something we have the ability to do.
We, we don't have the authority or we don't have the ability.
We don't have, we have not taken the state opportunity to, to default fire inspections at the local level because it's just an extremely expensive thing to do. Our fire inspections are provided by the state, by the fire marshal service, so. But, but like Bennington employs a full-time fire co-inspector, for instance. And that is one point where we did for, for North Bennington, where they, they may have that ability to call in tall and have him be required to look at stuff, um, but.
We talked a couple of meetings ago about having a file with, like, ideas to change or ideas to add?
Yeah, we're gonna get it, we're gonna talk a bit about that in a bit.
Okay, I was gonna say, I think we should add this to it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, it was the discussion of this last time that prompted my suggestion that we have a.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'm happy to go and start hooking up some language on this. Um, just, so when you are ready to go and crack the bylaw open, you have some language that you're ready to go and discuss. Um, the other question is, while you are on that, are there, so, this is one flavor of the categories of things that you could write, that you can use the plan unit development to facilitate. Um, one thing you may wanna consider is, are there any other things that you want to write a density bonus for plating and massing flexibility of other rule relaxation via the PUD? So if you do it some particular way that is otherwise compliant with the town plan and bylaw, maybe you, you also get similar behavior. I kept this presentation in just cottage courts, but there are many different preferential building or places that may fall away. So, think about that, that's just something to take home.
Yep.
Um.
I, it'd be interesting to know whether the types of, uh, building can possibly qualify for that. I suppose we probably need to go through each case by case just to take a look at.
Yeah, and you already have that, like, beautiful, you, you, you can, you can encourage anyone who comes able to subdivision or an idea to use the PUD, knowing that you have the illegal relaxables act.
Right.
Um, and it's just a matter of, do you wanna codify any other examples beyond something like this?
Right.
As part of that, and it's really, it's, I haven't even come up with a really good list of things that might fall. Uh, but, some things that would necessarily fit are either repurposing or, or adaptation of an existing structure may, may, uh, may fit for certain or multiple existing. Some people are using that for, for instance, more of the residential community is a very popular PUD mechanism. Where you could, you would think this might be helpful and say, develop redevelopment of some of these disused buildings that we do have down, a town like Shaftesbury would really benefit from that.
Yeah.
But, uh, we don't have that many, but if you do have them, those properties can really linger for many years and turn into huge ice horses. If they don't have their, the development rights to go and do something better, so. Um, flexibility is the name of the game here, uh.
Yep.
So.
Well, that's what we're interested in. I'm, I guess the one thing I went, looking at like the North, uh, Bennington examples that I wondered about is you've got uh, one example has like, you know, I, I think even a three level. Um, and because we've relaxed the parking requirements, it seemed to me that we were almost at the point of, or, or at least in the first of the two examples that North Bennington has in this, in their pages. It almost looked like there might not be enough parking, realistic parking for um, as many dwelling units as you'd actually get out of that building, that was my one worry.
Yeah, it's definitely something where thinking about, about the parking, making sure you have some Indian parking as part of this, being where even if you're, admittedly, I didn't say relax more, we're pretty much at, very tense as one that I vote for.
Yep.
And, but the, but the idea of making sure you have shared, at least one shared parking, a visitor parking moving zone is really important because of a lot of these things. Um, like, loading is, like, ordering more deliveries today than we ever have, so, yeah, you need a lot of people to move in. Yeah, people need to move in, people need to move out, people buy furniture. I have a, I encounter lots and lots of dangerous people doing all kinds of danger loading as they operate all day, and it's terrifying. Um, so.
I was in a townhouse situation where we did not have parking per building, as in like, there was sixteen townhouses connected together. And I think there's only like eight or tens parking spots.
Yeah.
And, and the idea of like, moving to say a zone or some other parking strategy, um, like, there's a lot of tools, toolbox on parking that can be, like, setting up certain restricted access and things like that, that you, that you can play with ultimately.
Right.
It's like, it's a well-developed toolbox and, and it's something that I am just, we know that parking requirements underneath them all is mostly made up signs, so, but ultimately, the parking requirements are a gut feel. And, we, and we don't wanna be, ultimately develop, it doesn't pay for developers to give that, to provide too little parking for their customers to actually use on it, and if they're gonna be frustrated, they're going to sell that property quickly, they're not going to want to rent, rent the property. Uh, and that developer will often not make one, um, so, we want to make sure we, we have the profit motive in here, that's very common, but something that they, that they, we do provide enough parking. And that's true of places with parking requirements all over. Um, this is the literature I follow very closely, um, and it's something that we very reliably see that that developers are all over that, when, when parking units are relaxed.
Right, but I know we had to, you know, we effectively minimized our parking requirements in the last bylaw by, uh, since the state basically made us do it.
The, the, the maximum we can make in that law.
Right, so we can never say this, this does not strike this as having enough parking spaces. If it's, if it's reached the one and a half, uh.
Yeah.
We can't require supplemental parking elsewhere, can we?
Not really, and it.
That's what I thought.
It's, importantly, for this kind of development, it probably won't matter because almost all of this is gonna be gonna have some, Amber Martin is gonna have some people to have, uh, elderly focus.
Right.
Something or focus on those who are gonna be a little more probably. Um, these are smaller buildings, they're, they're typically not gonna be two-car household.
Yep.
Uh, structures, if you're talking about four hundred square foot cottage or aging seniors, yeah, that's, that's not gonna be a two-car household if so. And if it is, then that developer is definitely gonna have to build it.
Right. Joe, you want to?
Oh, yeah, well, I, I've had the same thought that, you know, I look at this, I mean, like one visitor spot, you know, it's like that, what if somebody has a party?
Yep.
You know, so I think I'd wanna see that, at least, you know, that there would be road, um, parking, that we wouldn't wanna have one of these on a road where it's a no parking situation for whatever reason, it wouldn't be a good place to do it. Because that would really be limited.
Anyway, and it's. Yeah, absolutely, you've got absolute right.
Yes, parking is always something to keep in mind. And one car households, two-part households, we really wanted a lot from those two parking spaces for the dwelling. Just depending on the situation, John mentioned a townhouse or a similar setup like this up in Castleton. I think there's one in Fulton as well, it's more senior living, it's towards Hampton border. As you're heading out of town, they have parking and then they have multiple individual units all along each other. And it was a nice development, and then Fulton also has a secondary kind of senior housing courtyard kind of setting up as well um, by their senior housing center. Right, but those are good examples to maybe to, you know, if you guys take a trip or get some photos.
Yeah.
Well, I like Joe's idea where you could do possibly street parking, because these, these are really small development areas.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna have a lot of traffic using the circulation. No, so if the road is wide enough for two vehicles, I can see using the edge of the road for a little parking, so I, I like that idea.
Yeah.
You know, I think. But it just, it just.
Not all the time.
Yeah, because the state law, um, Aaron, your, your point is very well served, but, um, state law is relaxed it so that we know developers no longer have to put two per household, it's now one. And the truth is, in a lot of houses here, we have more than two cars, but, um.
Well, it's one point, it's one, it's one point by, and that's what we.
Right.
But yeah.
Yeah, it's just a consideration because of the fact that you have a lot of two-part households.
Yeah.
If a developer wants to come and build a whole bunch of things with zero parking spots, we should still let them. I mean, ultimately, if someone wants to come and build houses in the town, I think we I don't see any problem with it, they would just attract a different crew of people, I mean, I know people my age who don't have cars.
Yep.
So.
I don't think anybody would.
They also have a year.
I think we'd run up against state law.
We might, but I'm, I'm saying like, if someone wants to come and develop in a thing, yeah.
We can always go down, we can't go up, is, is, and that's the beauty of this, the existing QD empowers let your relaxed parking requirements when it, when it makes sense to you anyway, by, by pushing someone into the spot. So, if, if a developer comes through and they don't fit all of these criteria, maybe they're doing, they're proposing a setup for all homes, that. So, if if a developer comes through and they don't fit all of these criteria, maybe they're doing, they're proposing a setup for all homes that. That is not an archetype that we allow here because of the side effects. But, but that absolutely like could be a case to go to relaxed parking, and I mean, if it's. You know, you're replacing one house and two houses right here in the center of town, and they're, and they're likely gonna be some nearers on, or they're culminated.
I I I think it benefits the developer to provide as many parking spaces as there are houses. Otherwise, and they have a problem.
Yep.
Selling a house.
Yeah, but we also don't wanna have like a bunch of houses that can't be filled, right, like that's not good for the town.
But ultimately.
Any, anything like this goes in front of us anyway, that's obviously our ability to sort of to see.
I'm not, I wouldn't be buying any of these, this isn't for me.
I'm just saying, if you had no place to park, you'd go, would you live in a?
If I didn't have a car, then yeah, that'd be fine.
I put my my grandmother. In a unit like one of these. And that's exactly what I'm. That are like, if, like, ultimately, the park, the park community is still binding at that one, one and a half. Basis for a unit anyway, so for every two minutes, you are getting a third space, but. But you, but it's still the kind of thing where you guys still have the, have that authority to say, okay, minimum. There, you may have a little bit more play on shared loading type situation. Like, it's, that's a very big portion of state law, um. Can root, can you mandate slightly more where it becomes like one point six per household in in effect? By mandating some visitor parking, or is it okay to 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 designate, say, contingent parking? The commons rely on some continued parking as part of their parking requirements. Um, the site plan design of the firehouse that I'm sitting on that. Maybe we'll reach you guys someday, I'm not sure if any of you will still be on the committee when that happens. Uh, but the, but the base plan for forty two parking spaces with like ten contingencies. In case of the really big fires that draw out a bunch of people late, like. We're never gonna have forty two firefighters, but there may be a day when fifty two spaces are needed there, and it'll fit them. Um, but we never intend on using those, and that's okay, we have the designs there, um. And, um, and. There's a inter- a plenty of play with with commercial here as well, where. You do have parking mandates for commercial, the mandates are not, um, are not. As low as they are for the rest of it, and some of that mixed use. Kind of interplay here is also, the PUD rules allow for mixed use for the existing communities, so. That could also be something where parking is a continued parking or shared parking. With the commercial may be interesting, because commercial often will. Have different use profiles of the parking, they're using it during the day, people may need the extra parking overnight. That may be a good you, good source of that contingent parking. If you, if someone puts a, uh, a little, a small business in there.
How do you control contingent parking? Who gets it first?
I'm first, first. Presently, um, but that could also be done through in HOA. The, the, it's all like a company, but ultimately, these. These kind of units are typically gonna have an HOA of some form, because they're typically gonna be sharing wasteful.
In circumstances.
But they are regulated in some way, they have specific hours possibly.
Maybe, it, but a lot of times, the HOA in my grandmother's have. Development, it's a good example, does not like allow us free parking, it, but it's no overnight. And it's a very simple, very easy to enforce.
In the morning and the car is still there.
Yeah, I mean, someone might be called, some, they'll, they'll typically give you some leeway if it's icy or whatever, or they know. Or, but ultimately, this, this is the kind of thing where. They're always going to have some private governance as part of this, if you're mandating. A shared use driveway, and there's gonna be a road man association for it.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're sharing a set thing, most of these will, that's gonna be the case. Mostly probably will not be sharing a joint water system, because we would imagine they're being developed as part of. Within on town water, but there are joint water systems and a number of them out in the community that are just standalone in. And they don't share a road man association, they're open all up, um, up in your, uh, neighborhood, Michael. Um, is a shared water system that has like fifteen houses on it. So, it's not uncommon in the community to have all kinds of novel arrangements to drive or structure like this. But Joan's concept of shared heating source is a really interesting way. That you would imagine would have a relatively powerful HOA behind it. Because you're all jointly paying for heating in some way or another, and you're maintaining heating infrastructure, but you're not maintaining one set of heating infrastructure. So, could they pour, but some really cool clean energy, uh, usage, but also. Really low capital costs for writing that heating, so, yeah, I have, uh, it's a very interesting piece, because it is very.
At um, at our Arlington Energy Committee recently, we talked about thermal, um, heating networks.
Yeah, geothermal, that common, that common green area would work very well for that, yep.
And it would, it would provide, you know, for every deal with a one time, you know, sinking. That would go, probably just go under the price of each each house a lot. Um, you would have that economical dream, which would be so great.
Yeah. Yeah, the only, if your only shared area that would allow for, but if if it's not. If it's an independent water system, or the whole, uh, um, parcel. That would be maybe hard to have the central area geo, because you'd also have to have some sort of a. Place for effluviums to sort of mass, but um, yeah, I mean, it's possible.
Takes a huge amount of space for a term of that, Judy, pardon.
Not necessarily.
It, it, it's a coil system.
It's a coil system.
So it's deep and it's coil.
Yep.
You're, in any case, you're, you're often gonna be doing a lot of excavation, I think that's. You're running water lines, sewer lines, and all that.
But it's a good idea.
But.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah.
A bunch of different pieces that. It's almost like a canvas that that a flat designer can work to. Bring together some shared services and. And getting it all in close enough together that you're not running these lines forever.
Almost like there are advantages to. To planning things ahead, you know, yes.
You have to suit the requirements.
So I I have a thought on this whole idea, which is like, it's a great idea. Um, you know, like, we have some diagrams of the, you know, the last couple of pages of the handout. And I was thinking that it would be really good to put a whole bunch of those kind of things together, and you know, just to like. So, because people are gonna have a hard time wrapping their brains around all this. Do this, you can't do that, you know, but you can do this, you know, it's, it's kind of crazy. So, I was thinking that, you know, maybe, I I know we don't usually do like diagrams and stuff in the bylaws. But if we could have a reference to, you know, like a, you know, senior land use administrator. For more information and ideas that, you know, or.
I I think having, having like. Uh, sort of a template that checks all the boxes of what we put forward, and having like two different examples. Thus illustrating the fact that there is a lot of flexibility within those things, right, I think that would be sufficient.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a problem for us to put some examples in this.
There's public record documents of all these out there, who we, all we have to do is go find someone who's permits. Um, yeah, so, and this, this was so bogus for. In the nineties, when it was really first developed in the west coast, or in, in this modern area, that. That there's been enormous number of site plans out there on them. Um, I went down the rabbit hole, spent a good hour down there, realized I can't get lost, and um, came back out, so you're. But those were a couple of the better examples, um. But yeah, I like this idea of a, of a reference that we can, we write the bylaw that says, these are the rules, then we get, then we say. For reference, see the names, great idea.
I think, um, where your idea for no, um, parking spaces works is like, if you put it, say, in the village center. And you can, you know, use the street for parking, that does make some sense. Um, that might have some uh, blowback from other residents to the village center, but there is a way, at least.
I almost think that's a little bit more stylized than we can, because we can't technically enter beyond great parking anyway, because. Parking's abandoned with your bylaw, so. But it, but still, it's, it did formally used, of course, but you can't run into a permit. Um, but certainly, the idea of the rest of the pieces is what matters. How we, whether we can pull off some zero parking, I'd love to see. But Bennington hasn't put in any zero parking units yet, and they have a very friendly bylaw of this.
Yeah, I just don't wanna prohibit someone from, who has like, comes up with a really good idea for a really weird shaped piece of lot or an idea.
Yep.
Comes up with it, and then we have some small thing that shoots it down. So, I'm not saying that anybody would probably build a lot with no parking, but if someone wants to.
But you could also, you could absolutely see a neighbor who who sees a lot, like a side yard that's not. Being used, and they have a grandmother who they really need to find a character or situation where that's.
It's like sick owners only.
I lived in a twelve unit apartment building in Rutland that had two parking spots, and every single spot was full, and I had a roommate who didn't have a car.
Right.
So I mean, there are, granted, that's Roland, obviously, bigger population density, very different, but.
A minor bit.
Yeah.
I remember my statements.
If if you have a reduced rent for someone and it just fits their thing, I mean, hey.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as you were here, you say something along the lines of, you know, don't uh. Don't judge people, no, you feel like, don't judge people just because they wanna live a different kind of life than you do.
Of course.
No, I agree. I think Aaron wants to say something.
Well.
Go ahead.
We have to have a discussion.
But you're absolutely willing, you didn't even have to raise your hand.
Uh, so if you're gonna consider the parking aspect of it, also consider the alternative driving. Uh, aspects, neighbor to neighbor for taking folks to appointments through volunteer or paid. Uh, public transportation, making that a designated stop. So you can make that accommodation and actually making some type of agreement with the public service where you.
Good idea.
Can build a cover so they're out of the winter, because I know what we have across from Stewart's, people sit on that bench. Presumably, if you're at a spot where more than five people don't have a car. And you can have that arrangement, that might be a good collaboration. And then, you know, if we ever get in or whatever.
Well, and. Well, there's also people who have taken up e-bikes who work in the Manchester of the world and are, and he's. And or are people who are often staying within the town for mo- for most of the days. And getting a ride to the grocery store, getting groceries delivered from.
Yeah, there's a lot of people. You're the only one in the vehicle, and if you can kind of.
Yeah.
Giving a e-bike.
And added, that'd be an add-on to the.
No, it it just makes me think of, you know, how our lives are instead. You know, I mean, we may be at a point of time in our lives when we don't need a car, we're able to walk, we're able to have that e-bike. But then you get older, or maybe you have an injury or a sickness, and you're not able to do that anymore. Now you really do need to have a car, but you have no place to put it.
Yep.
I think it would be probably not all that good to have no car.
Yeah, it's.
I think it's not easily feasible, but it's not impossible.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it wouldn't necessarily be a good.
I mean, I.
I agree.
All of these are also gonna have different capabilities, depending on where they end up getting set up. This are town, while small, different locations are gonna vary wildly in terms of user access and things like that.
Yep.
You know, even if it's not that far apart, does it mean?
People aren't gonna be attracted to different areas.
But so, I mean, I think, you know, trying to plan ahead for all those contingencies is, I think the, the goal, if we do something, the bylaws is gonna be to. Really try hard not to preemptively stifle creativity, um, but know that. You know, we're, like you said, there's, these are gonna come across our table every time anyway. That doesn't make sense for that location, or. We said we didn't wanna do this, but they figured out how to make it work, and it does make sense for this location, like, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until we have a plan in front of us, it's really hard to say.
Importantly, any, any change here, it provides cover to prevent. Anti-development backlash in the calls.
Right.
That's, like, you already have the power, it's just really kind of vaguely designed. So if you're laying out the bare minimum of what you want to be generally agreeable, that provides us all. That legal cover, that, that the state doesn't have to change those standing rules for neighbor lawsuits, which. It's going to be considered, and it's currently being considered, but we can't guarantee the way to have it.
We're just trying to protect ourselves and make it harder for the ladies.
Yeah, we don't wanna make it necess- we don't wanna make it impossible for to, to look, to, to prevent reasonable neighbor pushback, but. Absolutely, the kind of thing, making sure that we're legalizing things that that generally makes sense. Um, and something like this is, it's convenient, it's very nicely anti-splal and. You're, you're condensing, you're taking a parcel and you're condensing the homes together, uh, and keeping the open space. And we need some available.
Well, if in order to authorize this, we have to cobble together our own list of exceptions to our own bylaws. It makes that much easier for somebody to pick apart that and find the chink in it, and get it thrown out for that reason, as opposed to just like. You know, anything of merit, right? So that's what, that's the, the objective would be to cover ourselves against that contingency, and say, look, this fits our planned unit development. You gotta find a better reason than just, we're contradicting ourselves.
Yeah, and, and generally, this all fits with the town plan about encouraging dense and build development and things like that, that. And, and around the village centers, so ultimately, it's facilitating compliance. And, um, and the regional plan about this, and housing targets, and many other nice things that, that provide us cover for on it.
No, I think it's a very interesting possibility that, you know. Our own exceptions and allow, you know, allowances for this type of development.
If, if you end up wanting to develop this further, but you don't, it's. Hit this different directions of the timing was on, um, it's a, it's such a flexible art, I, that you can. Really do a lot. Um, the land use development is one of the, is one of the best tools you have in your blocks, it's just one that we very permanently underused. For many years, because it's been relying on this open space based density bonus that. Is just not the right thing for you to follow me, so, uh, as we've seen how that's been used. All of those things, that end up overall that's producing the density of the site in pursuit of density bonuses.
We already have lots in town, where like, if you take a one acre lot and want to put four or five of these cottages on. We already have lots in town with smaller lots than those.
Yep. Well, we have a lot of stuff that predates our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our zoning.
We, we sort of still gonna be your concrete, almost always, uh, but there's, but there's some area where the soils are just really, really awesome. And, um, if you stumble on one of those, buy it, develop it with maximum spend. Wonderful that you found it, but those areas that, like supposedly have that geology, they're only about sixty years of that down. Or so, based on waste water sites.
Right. Yeah, I actually, I shared an article very late in the day today, which probably not everybody saw. Um, which is talking about some of the wastewater, uh, allocations that were made by the state, and a lot of them have been returned. Because it's been difficult, A, to get people to, uh, not worry that it's a, a sort of a pathway. To having really poor people in your town, um, but also, um, it's an interesting article, just, just because.
Oh, the V T D R article, I, I didn't read it, but it's funny, because I heard about it, this Montgomery Center is mentioned in it, right?
Yep.
I've been, I'm still part of that Facebook meeting, because that's where my parents lived, that's where I grew up.
Okay.
And so I've been following that closely, because I know all the figures in the Facebook chats and everything, it's, it's been an interesting discussion, uh, in the town.
Yeah, and in some towns, they found, they haven't found the land they possibly even put in that kind of infrastructure for wastewater. And other towns is just like, um, Montgomery.
Yes.
Remember, yeah, um, it's just falling into this trap of nobody wants any, you know.
Well, yeah, Montgomery has the problem of all the people who don't live on Main Street. Wondering why they should pay for people on Main Street to have wastewater sewage system.
Right.
Is one of the big arguments. Is one of the big arguments. Yeah, it's.
It's it's this is. What I would consider classic New England sewer nimbism, and it's they're both written about this and it's. But it's it is is a uniquely unique phenomenon. And so, um, but pioneered in Connecticut, spread to Massachusetts, spreading not in the in the eighties. And or in the seventies, we went through an episode, this nineteen sixty eight to nineteen sixty nineteen seventy two. Uh, wastewater attempt, iteration one, the oldest wastewater grant on the currently on the books in the state. Um, still on the books for us, we owe we owe the money back. Yes, we literally, we were a one of the great statewide pioneering cases on this, but we went up to. We went the EPA, I have folks that are like this, think on the environmental impact assessments. But we were about to get a wastewater system until a maybe group grows up, blocks. The the project at the EPA level and killed it and that and here we are, so. Three and that we've made now three or four or eight attempts to look at wastewater since that point, but. We had a really good shot, it went almost all the way and then it I it's end. Um, so, uh, very familiar with it, we we have a lot of documentation on where that was going to be, what it was going to be. But it was very much a product at this time. Yeah, it's very sad, but we we are, we have two uh, parallel wastewater projects right now, we'll see maybe they're going anywhere. But the EPA has contractors working with us right now, try and find a solution that's economical. Stay tuned, there's there's updates in the coming months, the contractors are going to be done by the end of spring.
So actually, if, uh, unless anyone has any more to add on this. I'm going to take that EPA, uh. That EPA reference and sort of just just turn it ever slightly, but so. What what are we looking at in terms of, obviously there's been a big change in terms of the administration in Washington and, um. I was just wondering what our town with grants received and assistance we're receiving is looking at. Losing or if we're looking at losing any.
Nothing we're losing, we did have our project paused for about a month, uh, with technical systems. But ultimately, this is not anything we're actively losing, it's things that we. It's things that we aren't going to gain, um, the prospects of substantial wastewater brands. Are between zero and none right now. So we will have, we, it's probably correct that we are looking at some form of. Townwide pumping. Subsidy mechanism. Um, but that is to be developed because I have to solve with attorneys and things like that, um, but. The idea of using the school's wastewater plant to take that implement from a pump out program. During the summer is something that's interesting to all of us, so at minimum, we're hoping to get something like that set up. That gives us a some form of subsidized pumping. For residents across the entire area, but. Without getting into any details, because we don't have details. Stay tuned on that.
But that means we need some sort of revenue revenue source within the town to basically be able to pay for it.
Not necessarily because it would be, it'd be offering the schools. Zero marginal cost or plus zero marginal cost. Capacity to the holler of ten likely for the subsidy amount. If they're getting the the dumping free, they're they're in for labor and trucking. You might get ten or fifteen percent off on this if we get to the end of it. Um, but that would be because, you know, that's even bigger than Vermont, so.
Yeah, I know, and we had been talking about in in fill housing quite, you know, like quite a while back, I had asked whether you can offer. Tax, you know, rebates within towns to people who are willing to allow this to happen. You had said you didn't think that's a possibility.
It's currently not allowed in state law, but there's no, it says state law can't change. So that's something that there is a townwide pumping program on Vermont Hillier that. That makes that does this kind of thing, but it is. A very uniquely Vermont institution that is quite literally a twenty year old handshake deal that is marginally legal in state law. So nice thing is we're if we're designing anything, we're designing it from whole law. So as long as we're not implementing new technical standards, you are likely in the clear on any. But hopefully we'll be program designing the summer, so we'll see.
That would be great. I one thing and uh, some stuff, some. Uh, literature I share with you guys from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Um, there was a, you know, there obviously the the letters. There are advocacy letters that they're pushing for. Um, so we may agree or disagree depending on on what their stance is, but I thought it was very interesting. They noted that in in this state, there are thirty five projects for, um. To develop water, um, infrastructure in, you know, either municipal waters or uh, or sewer systems. And Vermont is about two hundred and forty dollar forty million dollars short of being able to fund all those. So there's there's a need to figure out ways to to fund these things independently. Um, I think for a lot of towns, that's why I was asking about question, I think a lot of people probably would. We'd probably walk right into people saying, well, why should I be funding this for these people over there, which is all too common, but, um. It it would be interesting, at least there was that ability to sort of play with. Um, your ability to offer.
The concept of doing districts or actually districts is really important in that space. That we usually watch more is. That that's a little bit of value capture on these systems, but. If you go and ask the chair of Z B A, for instance, Andrew, who who's done a lot of work on wastewater. Um, he'll say that the way these towns are really going to realize that is. Is when the wastewater constraint gets hit in the in the center of their towns and. Buildings start coming down to become mound systems and that is exactly what will happen in the very long run. Um, in all of these towns, if you do not choose to devote property tax to wastewater, so. Eventually there becomes a very powerful incentive to save the center of your town by. By implementing some wastewater that's funded by all taxpayers. Mont Hillier is does like, for instance, has two hundred taxpayers who are not on their wastewater system. Um, their pump out program originated in the fact that these people are paying sewer fees. But getting literally nothing from the town. Except the fact that they have a thriving downtown shop it. And a slight subsidy every now and then when they, when they all their except like every five years. But yeah, ultimately, these people really have to realize that. The center of your town will die, it's not a, if it is a one and. It's only going to take a couple of properties in really prominent locations to to. Start to be a cluster of non-activity and that's something that we could be really afraid of here. Because we already do have a couple of lots that are like that, the church on the other side of Stewart's is a great example, that property cannot be occupied, cannot be used. And because it has nowhere for waste water field at all and. And as such, any owner of that is sitting there paying property taxes, doing nothing and they can't use it. At all, meaning.
What like, what can you do with a?
My mother's law owned that property like thirty years ago or thirty five years ago and couldn't use it then. Like, so they had a museum and then the wastewater water rules got tightened for like museums. And they had, and they it shut down and when when it was shut down, it was not able to reopen as anything else meaningfully. So that property has been a dead eyesore in the center of town for decades. Since it's run into its wastewater consuming, so that'll be a lot more common as time moves on.
Once there's a wastewater system. And nothing until then, so it's just the property degrades, but you know, it works, it gets taken down and some. Builds in the confines.
Yeah, conceivably, if there were a little bit of open land somewhere nearby, you could buy a second parcel of waste. Align and always more filled over there remotely, but that's not going to happen. Yeah, the center, the center of these villages is very terrifying. East Rollings thankfully has enough undeveloped land right now for that not be the overwhelming constraint, but that's. You know, that's development of one or two parcels away from not being gigs, so. It's it's absolutely a very tenuous, long-term existence that almost all towns. That our fans at all are living with and it's unfortunate, but it's certainly very much the reality of. Uh, having done, having gone through a round of the state rejecting million millions of dollars back in the seventies. For the exact same solve a problem, so we've had multiple plates of this apple, we've said no multiple times and here we are. But yes, no, we're not trying, I mean, I have. If you think of studies saying we tried.
You've got to get people to look forward and that's not always easy. I mean, it's the same, the the argument you're putting out there is the analogous argument to doing, uh, energy upgrades. Within towns, within our own, you know, own properties and that works for some people and other people are like, no. Um, hopefully people will open up for both ideas. Be more open to the possibility of expenditure for a long-term purpose. Um, anything else on that? Sounds like no, so let's move, probably not enormous amount. Uh, I know that, uh. We we clarified after the last meeting that it's not every five years, uh, that a town plan needs to be redone. Uh, we actually have until twenty twenty eight before we're supposed to do that, which I added into. Um, the notes, the minutes that we accepted, uh, earlier tonight, I just wanted to. Remind us that I thought actually interestingly, um, the Manchester was just that it had their energy committee. Um, to do their energy plan, which I thought was interesting. Um, we didn't have an energy committee when we did our, uh, energy plan, it was basically Charles and I who. Worked on that, but I don't know if it's possible to consider some sort of, even if it's. A cross group of some planning commission, some energy people, um. To consider that when we actually do look at this again in twenty twenty eight. So we had a very good idea about having a bylaw subcommittee, um, which would allow, if we had three members. Who are agreed upon, they could actually, uh, it would not actually exclude other people from contributing, which is still out for. The ability to share a document, um, between a group of that is not a quorum, which is four. Of our group, although I have to say this group before with, uh, seems to be very. The the solid group of of who's here most, Sujit definitely. Um, but we definitely need, uh, some alternate members besides Joan and Nick, I think. Uh, makes a lot of sense.
We will be soliciting a town meeting. Or, um, interest in all.
It's next week, right?
That is Monday, Monday night.
Where is it?
What time is this starting? It starts at six thirty, but if you want to social, maybe like.
It won't be preface by half an hour of chat games. But lots of Manchester have said no to that, so, um, it, yes, we will be moving quickly, um. Through the agenda, hopefully, and, um. I I'll grab a job with that one more. I have a couple of.
That would be great.
Thank you.
So so the question would be, who among us would be interested in being, uh. Part of a subcommittee basically or a document sharing group.
I need to be for numbers, I would do it, otherwise I feel like I have. Funny going on.
Yep, I understand that.
Yeah, to be, to create a group where we can, because we, at any point, we need the numbers.
But it allows us to actually like elected, like discuss the list and have it like maintained outside of form.
Okay, this the other, the other option would be everybody continues to send this stuff to me. Um, and I'll just continue to put a list up, but technically I don't think I can share it with the whole group.
Yeah, yeah, I'd I'd volunteer to do that.
Yeah, same.
And basically, I mean, I think if we're going to consider cracking open the bylaws and doing something. Prematurely, I mean, before we are forced to do it, I think it it, we should have a period of time where we're actively trying to figure out. I mean, I have a small list of things, I know Joan, I think, has a list of some things that she thought. Should be addressed, before we do that, I think we should have a good idea of what needs to be.
I would, I would set it out as the primary objective would be to collect and organize.
Yes, that is absolutely.
A list of all of the things that come up either in meetings or if other committee members want to send us ideas outside of it. Of additions or things to consider for the bylaws.
Yeah, it's not a this will or this won't, this is a collection of ideas.
This is just ideas and then that's going to get hashed out by the group. It's really just to be able to have a document that can be passed back and forth. With within it, with a minority of group members, there's no question of whether we're having, uh, illegal conversations.
So like a Gmail, like Google Doc where like more people have a password type of thing or.
What what I would probably do is, so this is why I'm volunteering, like I'm already kind of doing this stuff for like work related, but like. Um, find some sort of service that we would be comfortable hosting it on and. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be a shared password, everybody would have their own login, but privileges can be maintained and removed to that. So that way the the storage mechanism can exist independent of any one person.
Right, so the question is, of the four of us, does anyone not want to be involved in this?
I don't know if I can do it.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we just, uh.
Sure, three of us.
Yes, so do we need to, and let's make a motion to form, uh. Yes, go ahead, sir.
So only, and I know Sebass or Sebastian has some insight on this, because I'm sharing is, you know, Microsoft. Licensing, free server, not flagged.
Yeah, I heard about that.
It's just to be mindful of those, uh, compliances with public records requests. So if you're going to have.
Care of Joan on it, then then you're safe, uh, at some point or or. It was nominally a public record. Because all land use documents.
Yeah, I mean, the first order of business of the committee would be investigating what. Apparatus to share and we would actually consult Nick in terms of the legality there.
And we can also post through if we're going to use Microsoft product.
I'd recommend SharePoint if you already have Microsoft account licenses. Yeah, and you can restrict that to the three of you guys by being members of the private SharePoint page. But then at least that record is easily accessible by the town in case there's public records request. You know, I'm dealing with I car restrictions, international traffic arm regulations for my. With one of my roles and classified unclassified documents and isometric lines and stuff. We're doing with this, we're trying to share information internationally, but also by the way, international standards and it can get very tricky. But you need to just keep the audit aspects.
That makes a lot of sense.
You know, the thing about Vermont over record law and like that they apply to land use, it knows that's thing as a private record in in land use. Um, I, when anyone comes and makes a request, I I I grab the keys to Joan's office and we. And I can stand there and watch them, that'll make sure our record doesn't disappear, but ultimately, yeah, there's nothing that can be. Um, in in this world. Yeah, everything involved is, at least in Lambert's itself, but, um. Yeah, like it's it's nice that there's a bright line here, so. In any case, yeah, sorry, you had a motion?
All right, so. Yeah, do you have the language? We all want to make a motion, the question is we got to put the language exactly. Well, I think, um, you know, importantly, Sebastian pointed out the exact. Intention of it, which has to be part of the motion. Um.
So are we, do we wanna call this a bylaws committee? Is that the focus or?
Bylaw subcommittee.
It's a bylaw subcommittee, um, strictly for the purpose of uh collecting. Uh.
Sure, uh, so establish a bylaws subcommittee whose objective is to establish. And maintain a. Working record of. Proposed edits to the bylaws or town plan.
Proposed editor clarifications to the town.
To the town bylaws or or the plan, that's or just not.
Yeah, I think we're not working on that.
As that was a bylaws subcommittee, uh.
To maintain the aggregation of ideas.
To establish and maintain a record of. Proposed edits. Clarifications to the bylaws. For uh to facilitate.
Consideration by the whole.
Yeah, to facilitate consideration. By the full committee. At such times. That edits are possible.
Mm-hmm, that's perfect. Why, you wanna say that you're proposing this?
Sure.
Alright, who wants to second?
I'll second.
I was gonna let you do it, cuz he wants to do it, alright, all in favor? Alright, so the the members will be using.
Good.
So that should be included in the motion.
If anyone not hears complaints, we certainly consider.
All of them's gonna be on video online anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, no, exactly, no, I'm just saying if Suj or Elliot uh or Tom wants to say, but I wanna be here and help figure out.
So maybe before we leave tonight, we should make plans for the subcommittee meeting.
Sure.
Start working on.
Will work so well for you guys.
We can do that after the.
Of that, and it would just allow, and probably we're not gonna need more than once, it's really just setting up the basics so that we can communicate.
Maybe twice, once to evaluate like what systems we wanna use and get clarification laws, Nick.
Absolutely.
The second time to actually review, okay, now we got the system, here's what we're right.
Alright, and and then obviously we'll actively go through and see what we can find.
Yeah.
And solicit responses from other uh many members. Um, alright, so that's good, that was one of the things I was hoping to do tonight. Um, I did have a question about the minutes and just wanted to make sure that, um. The minutes, Nick, don't have to be um posted until they are uh approved by our committee, is that correct?
Ideally, they should, my law, they should be, they should be posted in draft form right away.
Okay.
As soon as they're received, so we'll we'll get a notice in the report.
Right, I was just trying to figure out, and Mike, Michael is always great about getting it in a in a very short period of time. And I don't think all of us necessarily have that ability.
How do we help Sebastian get the minutes out?
No, actually, I I I wasn't like trying to pick on you or anything like that, I was just trying to figure out.
When I, when I first started being, you know, the uptakeer on this, right, I was told that it had to be uh done like within.
Yeah.
Five to seven days because zoning board of adjustment meeting would take place at some time soon after. And they would want to have the ability to be on it.
Yeah, so that's definitely, it's like the the timeline should always be five days. And, and. But, yeah, I'm also happy to help, so I'll take that and.
I I'm just knowing myself, I respond well to accountability, uh external accountability, so if somebody sends me an email on day four. It's just a reminder, no, really, but like, I mean, I, you know, I I I have learned in my forty years how to manage my ADHD. And um external accountability is a, is a big question.
That makes sense, I I honestly, I always liked how you did it, as quick as you did it, but I never felt like there was anything that required us to do it. So yeah, that was part of my interest was to try to figure out whether there was a rule behind.
Yeah, but if somebody, but if you wanna send me an email on like day four, don't feel like you're nagging me, cuz I literally, I had this on my to-do list for the entire month that I've been on the board. And every day, I'm like, not today, I was like.
And and Sebastian, there's, there's certain regular people that get copies of it, so Robin gets a copy.
Okay.
The uh zoning board with Justin Chan.
So that's all new to me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send you an email with the like minutes one-on-one type stuff, um, yeah. So I'll I'll plan on getting that up to you.
If, when you send it to to Sebastian, would you send it also to me just so that I have that, cuz I didn't know. I think it's probably a good thing to know.
I'm typing up some of this stuff as part of my like. Disaster incident hit by bus planning like type situations are all. The cover bridge or whatever, um, the. So, yeah, this was something I was already working toward the next week anyway, so I mean, I'll get you guys back uh for that information once I get it typed up.
Alright.
Excellent, thank you.
So, the other things just that I've noticed that I thought I would uh bring up, let me just see, one I already mentioned about the difficulty even. Getting the full funding for in um wastewater infrastructure, um. I was interested in another one of these uh VLCT newsletters um that they were talking about, possibly uh that they were. That the House Committee on on General and Housing is working on a bill that would require statewide registration of all uh rental housing. Uh, including short-term rentals.
Yeah.
I wanted to bring it up only because we've discussed in principle the idea of whether we should have any sort of uh registration.
So that is a state requirement there?
No, but they're looking at that, I wonder how likely it is, um. Given, given the environment at the moment, but um. We do have at some point to make a decision about whether we want to uh just have, you know, our Airbnbs in town or search and rentals. Just registering.
Well, yes, to the registration, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I would too, but it sounds like it might, or mine just, like, it might just be done for us.
That'd be handy for doing.
Well, that's what I was thinking is that I could get the list from the state, you know.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yep. So maybe we should wait to see.
Cuz I think, I think, I think pushing for that.
A lot more in a month.
Yeah, and I think pushing for that comes at a real cost of our reputation to the town.
Yep, and I've been worried about that from the beginning.
Yeah, especially right now, you know, I I wouldn't even be able to say uh along like political lines, who would be for or against registration, right?
Abs- absolutely, right, like.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I just wanted to note that that might become something that, yeah. Um, I mean, I'll just point out, cuz I've been sending these uh remote league uh cities and towns. Sorry, go ahead, excuse me.
I was just gonna say, would that also apply to ADUs, your short-term rental aspects? And and just a second question is, do you guys maintain an ADU list? Cuz they did do the grant funding over the past two years. It gets a little complicated, but we can use it, I think.
Yeah. We, I know we don't, we definitely don't maintain a specific list on this, um, but it certainly.
But everyone gets permitted, so there is some that.
We've not actually permitted a formal ADU that doesn't include their meaning on the ADU that are either unpermitted or or. Or have previous permitting or got readapted, something like that, um, yeah, we, it. That's an easy space, uh, and maybe some of these are just. That are just legally unpermitted.
Why would you worry about um having a master list of accessory dwelling to begin?
I wouldn't worry about it.
I was just in at your interest, sorry.
So, I ask that question, A, because there's been grant monies attributed by the state, we have a housing shortage. And you can use it as a way to attract people to the town, saying, hey, we have these opportunities of open rooms.
Yep.
Or open apartments, or whatever the ADU is, that our residents have voluntarily um contributed to. So that was more from the idea of just trying to attract, attract investment.
We've done a lot of shony news and been really unsuccessful.
Well, it's very cost prohibitive, it's to build, I mean, I got quoted like fifty thousand to convert my garage into an ADU.
Yep, it's, it is absolutely like extremely cost prohibitive, and under our environment is not good for that um right now.
But I was just curious.
Now, I appreciate you asking.
Yeah.
I, it, one of my great sadnesses in the last quarters is that we've had like three, four, five years. So, they've they've gone like some, like one or two steps online and something else, but um, we'll see.
So the big part, actually, of our previous bylaw, okay, had a lot to do with ADUs, we we talked a lot about them. And you've had a lot of inquiries of them.
I had inquiries, but I've actually only done one permit in the last two and a half years.
Yeah, I, I think the whole fund is really. First come, first served, and you know, higher deaths of populations in the state, the money was just coming pretty quickly. I think Suj even tried getting ADU monies in a measure, it was successful. But it was a process for him, yeah.
And that's like some of the things that get left in the cutting room for and see a bunch of things out right now, so we'll see, but we're, but. We have a really generous ADU by law, um, and.
Yeah, I know you guys.
Yes, but even then, it's, land commissions aren't enough, they don't need permits, they don't, if they have any corrections.
They don't supply money.
No.
Yeah, one thing I was gonna point out, which I mentioned before, I mean, the VLCT actually calls for allowing. Local regulation fees and taxes to prevent uh proliferation of short-term rentals as well as second homes, which I thought was. Very interesting, I haven't seen people attacking second homes quite in that.
I mean, I have Facebook comments.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I.
But I think it's more the fact that they don't, they can't afford that long, or they just never.
Yeah, but that's, that's all I like to think of, and it just seems like, you know, you're gonna start, uh. Actually, second homes pay taxes in the state. I was just like looking at this and thinking, well, that's not, you know, you're you're, you're not looking at this right.
Yeah.
Um, at least my, I just wanted to point out, because I've been sharing this and everyone said they they find it interesting and it does. Highlight legislation, there's, there's good, good things and bad things.
There's a balance, right, like the extra tax income is definitely valuable, but at the same time, you also have to have housing.
We need to have housing.
Exactly, right.
And that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
I tell that to Suj all the time, you know, let me go stay. Yeah, exactly, you're not here, I know you're not here, can you tell me that? Now you wanna go check on it, bring your packages to the forest.
I I did think that the article that Joan shared um about, you know, from Vermont Public about uh. Um, just, just about the governor's uh uh proposed sort of. Pullbacks were were slowing kind of the schedule of the environmental. Uh, requirements that the state has voted, it was interesting.
It was interesting.
It was, because you you realize how much money is involved in this, that, you know, um. I mean, this is, this all costs money, and it's why I kind of pointed to the uh similarity to what Nick was talking about, just because. You've gotta both think ahead and also think about being able to pay your groceries, basically, and.
Yes.
And we're seeing that build code is looming very large here and. Uh, we're, we've done a lot. One of the next major efforts of the state level is gonna be toward toward build code reform, and there have been some baby steps. The baby steps have not translated into anything meaningful in this area. We will be the last to deal impact of bill code reform because of what pencils down here. But we are also some of the first to benefit from relaxation of particularly that. The very, very deeply controversial R sixty um insulation requirement, which. The contract to class is absolutely additive against because. The debate of R forty-nine, which is very cheap to build, through R sixty, that is enormously expensive to build, is. Kind of the defining feature of bill code conversations and. Is it worth it to get that extra eleven R value when it's gonna add twenty or thirty thousand dollars to it? It's a really interesting question, ultimately, um, and one state's gonna really have to wait over because it's not popular either way. But R forty-nine is what we we will be going to at Town Hall, for instance, um, because we're not down by this this current rules.
I think the money comes out anyway, because you either spend it initially on building your house or you have to spend it. Annually during the winter months when you're spending more for fuel.
Absolutely.
So it comes out one way.
It it'll, it'll balance out just a matter of when, and that financing costs matter a lot, um. But we'll see.
Yep.
But.
Anyway, that's the the only, that's the last thing that I had, I think.
Did you? I was just gonna, sorry, I'm jumping ahead of you, but.
Please do.
Uh. In regards to the minutes, like how much of random discussion about articles circulated or whatever needs to be included or should be included?
Eric gave an update on on articles about X.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, I'm really talking to this group so that we're sharing information together because we can.
Yeah.
And I've been getting more and more interested in looking at some of the legislature, I think, out there in the legislature and how it. Affects their town, and I just thought it'd be more interesting.
I I think it's, I think it's good, I just, you know, and as regards like official business of the committee.
Really just, we just. I think it can be pretty cursory.
Okay, yeah.
If if there's anything that may be brought up immense.
I hear there's no action coming, so.
There's no action.
It's just a sharing of thoughts.
Alright, so last thing that we would have this evening before uh we ask to adjourn is uh the Land Use Administrator Support.
Yep.
Um, which I hope everybody has read, do you wanna say anything?
Pretty self-explanatory, um, but it's, I combined it because there was so little going on in January. Did two months together, that's okay, you go.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have, I haven't issued any permits over that period of time, um. I do have some in works, which are below the next item. Um, we do have the Baton Hill RV working on changes that you recommended, Eric, to that survey.
I think there's a new plan.
There, there was, there was a new plan, but I had showed parts of the uh. Floodway exceeding the special flood hazard area, which is not possible.
Right.
So, um. Uh, Joan has uh shared a copy with all of us, actually, and I just wrote back and I said, this, this can't be true. So, uh, they are going to fix where the axles, uh, special flood hazard area uh ends. Which I'm assuming will be outside of the pink line. That they put the floodway, no. Um.
So basically, we're, you know, it, um. Baton Hill RV has gone back to the surveyor and said, please explain this.
Yeah.
I'm not an expert, they're not experts, the surveyors, tell us what the heck's going on with that.
Absolutely, I do think in general that um they should definitely have. Floodway and special flood hazard area on the index, uh, which in the, in the case of what we're talking about is often on the left. Sometimes I guess I see it on the right, but just.
It's it's on the left, but for whatever reason, those weren't on there, they will be.
Yeah, I definitely think when we're dealing with any property that affects the special flood hazard area, we should ask for that because. We're probably gonna end up asking for it and it will cut us step.
Right.
You know, um, in terms of individual things, I think uh this pretty much lets us know where they are. Um, so I don't personally have any comment on it, anyone?
I'm just happy to see that the Gould property has been somewhat resolved.
It looks like we're working for it.
I I I think we're a long way from resolved, but at least there's some ideas that.
They're moving along, yeah.
Alright, and uh if nobody has anything else, I would certainly entertain a nice little, you are a mystery. So we have a motion to adjourn, seconded, all in favor, come on, someone's gonna say no, right? Thank you, guys.